Welcome to the October 9, 2024, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Copley.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodyear.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Commissioner Aparna, Commissioner Gagne, and Commissioner Van Nyman are excused tonight. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present tonight. Jeff Churchill, Glenn Coyle, Kim Dietz, Odra Cardenas, Lauren Alpert, and Chris Wyatt. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's approved. And I look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 25, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and that is approved. Next up is time for us to hear a public comment and items from the audience. Reminder to keep your comments to three minutes and start with your name and address. And also a reminder that RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment in support of or opposition to ballot propositions, measures, or candidates.
So we have two speakers. The first is David Morton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond, 98053. In today's presentation on the requirements and incentives, there's an option to, quote, "expand mandatory to add EV-ready parking," end quote. What if all new multifamily parking spaces were at least EV-capable? An EV-capable parking space has basic infrastructure like conduits and an electrical panel, but without wiring or outlets needed for future installation of EV chargers. An EV-ready space has all necessary infrastructure in place, including wiring and outlets, making it easy to install a charging station. The advantages of EV-capable parking spaces are, first, cost efficiency. Installing basic infrastructure like conduits during initial construction is cheaper than retrofitting later and allows developers to prepare for future EV charging demand at a lower cost. Second, EV-capable spaces reduce initial investment and can be upgraded to EV-ready spaces on demand. Third, preparation for the future. With minor financial commitment, residential areas are prepared for the widespread adoption of EV use. The advantages of EV-ready parking spaces are, first, immediate use. Residents can easily install chargers without further construction. Second, attractive to buyers. EV-ready parking increases property value and appeal to eco-conscious buyers or renters wanting future-proof infrastructure. And third, cost-efficient preparation. Adding wiring and outlets upfront during construction is more cost-effective than retrofitting later. EV charging can be installed on demand. The disadvantages of EV-capable parking spaces are, first, no immediate functionality. Residents cannot charge their vehicles without additional installations, limiting the utility of these spaces in the short term. Second, upgrade costs. Though more affordable initially, converting EV-capable spaces to EV-ready still requires extra investment for wiring and outlets, which can delay charging availability. The disadvantages of EV-ready parking spaces are, first, higher initial costs. Installing wiring and outlets increases upfront costs for developers or HOAs. Second, underutilization. In areas with low EV adoption, the charging infrastructure may remain unused by non-EV owners for some time. In deciding whether to install EV-capable or EV-ready parking spaces, the demand, cost, and benefits must be balanced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second final speaker signed up is Katie Kendall.
Many of you know me. I haven't been here in a while, but my name is Katie Kendall. I'm a land use attorney. And for all the new Commissioners, so hello, for those I haven't met. I represent a number of developers that have developed in Redmond all over the city. So today, I'm just kind of speaking broadly on a couple of the items that you have before you or will be coming before you, and specifically on some of the proposed inclusionary housing regulations and the relationship to the proposed incentive program, which I know you're talking about tonight. First, on affordable housing, I'm extremely concerned about the proposal in Marymore and the urban mixed-use zones in particular to require housing providers to provide 15% of their units at 50% AMI. You'll hear in the coming weeks in these comments that, you know, it's just not really going to be a feasible option, and our belief will deter future development. And I'll speak to that in future comments, but what I wanted to talk about today is actually on how the analysis of these proposals are set up, because I think that's something that's important for you all to talk about. To actually review the impact to a project from the new zoning, the affordable housing model should provide the right comparison, and in our view, they don't currently. The models currently compare a residential project using a base FAR in a zone and compare that to a new project using the base FAR in a new zone. On paper, that makes total sense. It's an easy apples-to-apples comparison, but I think in reality, what it does is it skews the results so that it appears that the new zoning provides more value to a project. And the reason it does that is under the current zoning in Marymore, or I'm going to say Overlake, even though that's kind of already done, but just as a good example, it's relatively easy in downtown Marymore to achieve the incentives to get to your maximum FAR and maximum height currently. And so it would, and no one builds the base code now. No one builds three stories or four stories. They're building five or eight, depending on which zone they're looking at. So I think the better comparator here is to really look at what can you build now under the current code, including how you would obtain incentives under the current zoning, and compare that with the new base program, to see what value is truly being added and what is the impact of the proposal. It's a little harder to do in a model, I understand, but I would ask staff and the Commission to try to really think about that comparison versus just looking at something that's a .2 FAR versus, you know, a 5 FAR. That looks great, but that's not the reality of what we're talking about. I'll send some examples in an email instead of talking in the nuances and details, because it's going to get too number-specific. I'll have some other comments to staff on some concerns with the models, in particular with the UMU zone in Marymore Core. Again, it's a little inside baseball, so I will send that to staff to see if we can work those out. But one of the reasons this becomes important and why I'm here tonight is that along with this 15% at 50% AMI, most projects are still going to have to obtain incentives under the proposed zoning, under the future code. And I want to make clear, this is incredibly different than what is happening in the proposed Overlake zoning. For the most part, most projects are not going to be using that incentive zoning in Overlake for quite some time. You're allowed to build eight stories. You'll probably continue to be building eight stories for quite some time until the market really allows you to build more than that. And what that means is that every project to get to five stories, or six stories, or even eight stories in Marymore and downtown in the urban mixed-use zone are going to be in a situation where they're already having to do the incentive program. So we have, it's a double whammy. We have 15% at 50% AMI plus at least 2% at 50% AMI. So we're at 17% plus all the other incentives that we have to get to just to get a project off the ground in these zones. And one thing I would ask staff, and maybe it can be clarified today, is if you do need just a little bit of additional height or just a little to get above that base, what are the easy paths to do that so that you're not going to 17 or 20% at 50% AMI for your project, just to get to five or eight stories? How can we make that simpler for those projects to get to eight stories and not be, you know, have that kind of double whammy that I'm seeing that would happen, especially in the urban mixed-use and in the Marymore Core? Similar concerns to downtown, but they don't have the additional cost of the affordable housing increase in terms of the deeper affordabilities. But what I worry is that with downtown and these other areas, that we're going to have lower density development. If we have development, it will be lower density development, so we're avoiding some of these incentives. So you're going to see a lot less, you're not going to see eight-story buildings, you're going to see four- and five-story buildings. And I don't think that's really what we're looking for, especially near light rail. So I just ask the staff and the Commission to rethink these regulations and how they relate to the incentive regulations so that we can provide an easier path for getting to the appropriate densities that we're all looking for while still providing valuable affordable housing. Thanks.
Thank you. So those were our two?
Yes.
Okay, great. So in that case, I'd like to start the study session on the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050, introducing Kim Dietz.
I think Kim's going to come on a little bit later.
Oh, pardon me.
So I'll get it started.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Churchill. And we are going to finish up what we started last week, which is getting through kind of an overview of the Part 1 of the 2025 Code Package. And the first thing I would like to do is just kind of recap what we completed last time. So what we did talk about on the 25th was zone consolidation, a restructuring of the zone chapters, a review of the downtown Marymore and mixed-use zone standards, and issue identification for all of that. And so what we'll cover tonight, then, for the Zones and Uses package, it's really the use side of that. So we talked a lot about the Zones. Now we're going to talk about the use side. Where use regulations are located or are proposed to be located in the code, and then a few highlights. So home business regulations, accessory commercial uses, active retail uses, food truck and pop-up retail courts, and then special districts. And I would propose that for each of those, we could just pause and kind of see what kind of issues you might want to add to the issues matrix. So I need to fast-forward in this slideshow, because it's showing you Slide 1, and we are way past that. So pardon the headspinning here. Okay. A little bit of this, we went over actually a couple of weeks ago. 2104, that's at the, that's near the front of the zoning code. It's a chapter that will have all use regulations. As you may have seen in the first drafts that were sent out with the packet, that we don't expect that you've all read through all the way, and we have more time to get through the reading, but a lot of the volume of 2104 is taken up with special use regulations. So there's tables that say, you know, what uses are permitted and limited and not permitted. And then for many of the uses, there's our sections down below that talk about regulations that are specific to that use. So that's a lot of the pages. There are a couple of use chart updates. One of those is removing housing as not allowed use from the business park zone, consistent with policy in the Redmond Comprehensive Plan that is pending before council. And then establishing use, establishing columns in the use chart for the new mixed-use zones. And then all the old charts get repealed. And so you saw pages and pages of strike-through of old use charts in 2104. On the right-hand side of the slide, it talks about how the, how the use regulations are implementing the idea of complete neighborhoods. So there are updates for neighborhood residential and neighborhood multifamily to accomplish some of those smaller-scale commercial uses in residential neighborhoods. There is the establishment of the neighborhood mixed-use zone, which we went over a couple of weeks ago, and then tonight we'll cover home-based businesses. So in the copy that was part of your packet, this is the organization that you saw. The first part hasn't changed for about 13 years, but what is new is new use tables that are Sections 100 and 200 for residential and non-residential, and then special regulations related to residential, which is 300, and then non-residential, which is 400. Temporary uses, and 300 and 400, those uses, those use regulations, excuse me, those are pulled from many different places in the code and consolidated here as use regulations. So they're colored blue because it's a lot of text in 2104, but none of it's new. It all, it all is in there already. Temporary uses similarly are elsewhere in the code, just being pulled into this chapter. Similarly, legal not-conforming uses and structures already exist somewhere else, but it's being pulled here because it's a use-related regulation. So this gets into a little bit more detail. There are several sections of content that used to be in the residential chapter that's getting pulled into 2104. These are just different, these are special use regulations for a variety of different uses, like accessory dwelling units, cottages, and more. The second-to-last line on here is actually out of date, so we're not going to move permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, and emergency housing into 2104. We're going to let it be in 2157. That's a proposal. Okay, so then, some of the highlights. One of the highlights is home business regulations. So we've been saying for a long time in the Redmond 2050 process that one of the things that we can do to implement, implement complete neighborhoods is to ease up on some of the restrictions on home businesses in Redmond. They are, if you read today's code, extremely limited in size and in the number of trips that can be generated, and the number of people that can be involved, things like that, which makes them almost unnoticeable, which maybe was the point, but doesn't get us very far toward having complete neighborhoods. So one thing that we can do is to ease up on that a little bit. So there are some, a small, really a small number of edits, but we think make an impact in a positive way that are proposed. One of those is removing the location restrictions, so the on-property limitations. A second is allowing more of the space that already exists on the site to be devoted to the business use, so increasing that from a quarter of the space to a half of the space. Having some consistency and clarity in delivery and customer hours so that we know when people can be showing up to patronize businesses. There are, there is language in there about residential character related to these home businesses, and the fact of the matter, these, these home businesses operate in existing structures that are already built, and so that language seemed unnecessary, but also not in line with the direction in the Comprehensive Plan around kind of how we talk about neighborhood character. There will remain and are, I think, clearer, there's clearer language, in our opinion, proposed around impacts. So we really want to be attentive to what are the impacts of businesses in residential neighborhoods. So there's clear language around noise, vibrations, odors, things like that, that have, that could have a negative impact on people in the surrounding area. So that's, that's not lost. That's there, and we think it's clear, and it's something to look at, and just kind of to assess for yourselves, you know, is this the right, is this the right level? Is this the right kind of formulation of that language to, to get at the outcomes that we want to see? Let me pause there, because I think that's the only side on home business, and just see if there are questions or things people want to toss onto the matrix.
So I had two things for the matrix. I'm not seeing other Commissioners, so I'm going to just jump in here. For the home businesses specifically, I just, I, I like what's happening here on the whole. The things that I had questions about were that line of not materially detrimental in terms of noise, trucks, traffic, vibration, odors, or other potential operational impacts to the neighbors in the residential neighborhood. And that seems incredibly arbitrary to me. Like, it's a, it's the right drive, but I don't know who decides if it's materially impacting someone, or like, if a lot of neighbors in a short radius feel like it's materially impacting them, like, what is the procedure for the city to negotiate that? And is this just at the point of permit? This is a really big one. Is it just at the point of permitting, or is it something where, over time, the conditional use license is somehow, or conditional use permit is somehow tied to not creating any of these impacts? So I just, I had a lot of questions about what this would actually look like for a particular business in a neighborhood where there's conflict with the neighbors.
Great, we'll add it.
And then the other thing was very small. I didn't see anything about home businesses and signage. And I think it's nice just to have parameters about that, because it just helps people, like, stay within reasonable limits if they know what those reasonable limits are, and the code seems like the right place for that, to me. But then the other piece is a really popular thing in my neighborhood right now is those, like, little stand-up temporary sign boards that you would, like, you would picture them outside a restaurant, saying, like, here's our special, or like, here's a joke, or that sort of thing to lure people in. But we're seeing them left out on sidewalks just around our neighborhood as a, like, kind of semi-permanent advertising feature, but then obviously that creates traffic problems for pedestrians and strollers and that sort of thing. So being a little bit specific about what's allowed and what isn't would be amazing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Copley.
Based on what Susan Weston just said, Chair Weston just said, I think it might be an idea to create a city-administered directory of home-based businesses. And I say that because if there were signage, or if the signage was small and people had to get up to a house, because these are home-based, someone could ostensibly walk up to the front door and say, oh, I thought this is a home-based business, and people would probably be concerned if there wasn't a business there, and someone said, hey, I was just under the impression there might be. That could be a concern in the future, I think. And so if there was some sort of directory that the city had that said, hey, these are the businesses, you can go and should go check these out, I think that would be nice, just so that people have an idea of where these are and are not.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Chair Woodyear.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say, I think...
Oh, dear. One moment.
I think there's an opportunity, I think there's an opportunity for more clarity around, around quality-of-life nuisances. So things like signage, things like light, things like traffic congestion, parking, like, I see there's mention of there, but I think there's an opportunity to be more expansive in light of some of the comments we've heard from Chairwoman Weston and Commissioner Copley, because I can see this really sort of detracting from what we're trying to achieve, especially as this tends to, as this begins to proliferate.
Yeah, I just, I think specificity is great in this sort of situation, with the goal that I think we all agree with, the, the idea of bringing more businesses into neighborhoods, but just being clear on, like, what is a nuisance and what does this mean? Commissioner Coleman.
So we have a couple of childcare businesses around our neighborhood, which have been totally fine. My, so just as an example, I think those seem to work okay. My question, though, is, is a little bit around, or an observation is, is it, would you allow people to come together and have multiple businesses under a, you know, like a company that go across a neighborhood? So it's, you know, this, I'm going to say, use Starbucks, like, the Starbucks of Education Hill where we live. But is this, is there something around, it can only be a home-based business in your home, and you can't, you know, amalgamate with, with others? I think that's another part of this, for me, which, which would concern me.
Are you asking if multiple businesses could operate out of one home, or if multiple businesses could operate, or if a business could operate out of multiple homes?
No, I'm talking about...
Or something else?
Neighbors, neighbors across, say, an area, somebody sets up a business where they bring neighbors in across Redmond as a whole, and you've got, like, 10 businesses going out of other people's homes that's owned by one person, and they franchise out to other people, as an example.
Hmm. So like, is there a limit to, like, small business and what that means, or family business and what that means?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should it just be your business in your place, and that's all you can do?
We touched on this in definitions last fall, and I don't know if it applies to this current revision of the code, but that would be a really helpful thing to go back around on. Vice Chair Woodyear.
And I would go even a step further. You can conceivably see an entire block full of businesses, you know, every house on the block, and are we okay with the implications of that in terms of parking, congestion, quality-of-life nuisance, the specificity around my previous comment?
I think I would be in, just for me personally, I would be, given the way the rest of the code is written, so when we're talking about, there's still a requirement that the resident, like, it's residential in the sense that a certain portion of the home is still dedicated to the person who lives there. So it's, you'd be running something out of a house that's still residential. To me, that covers it. But if it doesn't to you, then maybe a specific recommendation.
Great, that's really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll be a good conversation. Okay, in terms of special regulations for non-residential uses and where they're coming from, so again, this is just all stuff moving into 2104. I mean, the point of this slide is not to understand every row necessarily in specificity, but just to show that it's coming from a lot of different places in the code. Some of these regulations show up in multiple use tables and multiple chapters, and it's the same thing. And so instead of being in the code maybe 12 times, it'll be in the code one time. And so it's coming from all over the place. All right, jumping to accessory commercial uses. And Kim Dietz, would you like to take this and the next two uses?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Accessory commercial uses is something that came up in the past couple of years. As we are seeing, I know, the, the development and growth of our city, some businesses end up being displaced and aren't able to relocate in, say, the complex in which they were previously located, or in the neighborhood in which they were located. So this brought up an opportunity for a limited, restricted lease that would allow for the co-location of a business that has been displaced and finds an opportunity to co-locate with another business that isn't using the entirety of, say, its original floor space. Now, this wouldn't happen in every location for every business, because the, this co-location is being proposed such that it would not impact the regularly allowed uses in a zoning district, that the restriction part of the lease would be that if the underlying business in which the primary lease is held no longer operates, relocates, or does happen to need that additional floor area back, that that additional, or the sub-lease business would no longer be able to operate in that space. It would be limited, of course, to a small portion of the underlying business, which would be no more than 25% of the gross floor area, and the uses would be compatible in a general sense. Finally, the use that is co-locating to this new location would not impact, say, like, for parking, or for the general operation of a manufacturing park, that new business would not impact the regular operations of the underlying businesses or adjacent businesses. So it's a very unique opportunity, but it can create that limited-term restricted allowance that allows a displaced business to continue its operations in Redmond until such time that it was able to re-home itself, or might even revert to a home-based business, or find a new location in general. Are there any questions? Jeff, could you proceed to the next slide, just to make sure I covered it all? I think I did. Okay, yes. So were there any questions on the accessory commercial?
Yeah. Commissioner Copley.
First off, Kim, thank you for putting this together. I think it's fantastic. My question is, are there going to be resources provided by the city while those businesses are displaced to help those businesses find a permanent home?
Yes. Yes, that is something that the city is actively looking at through the economic development team, as well as our partnership with One Redmond.
Commissioner Coleman.
So a couple of things to me. One is, I'm not sure what's defined by compatible. What does compatible mean? Is there an example, a couple of examples?
Why don't I answer that in the issues matrix? Because it, it really does depend on the specifics. Because it really does depend on the specific situation. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think we're just putting together a matrix now in general, so that would be perfect.
That's a second thing. The second thing is, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I've got a business, I'm getting displaced and I'm going to try and find another business tomorrow, I can use a quarter of their floor area to put my business in. So I'm trying to work out like what type of business would do that in the sense of, if you already had, say, you had the same floor space as that business you're going into and you're trying to reduce your business, I'm just trying to work out like what kind of businesses would do it. It's a great idea, but I just don't quite know how you practically do that in a temporary or short-term way.
I've seen examples of this in Seattle, actually, where you have a retail business that then has created space for like, it's not really a pop-up shop because it just stays there, but they kind of give part of their floor space to another business that got displaced. So I'm, I've seen it. I don't know if it's successful for both businesses, but I've seen it in retail at least.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to picture it, but we should come back to it.
Yes. Vice Chair Wood here. I think everything's getting added to the issues matrix right now. Commissioner Copley.
What are the use cases that were contemplated for this? I mean, retail, I think, is one that we're all discussing, but are there others?
That one's on the list.
Yes.
I kind of took that as the same question, examples, use cases. Yeah.
Great. All right. I think we're ready to keep going.
All right. The next one is active retail uses. And this is something that we have had in our code in different forms, but in recent years, we've noticed that it isn't quite at the level that it was intended. And so what staff are recommending is similar to what you can see in some of our neighboring jurisdictions where retail uses are required in certain locations that would be more active in the sense that they are encouraging more walkability, more of an experience by the customers, more of a relationship between the business and the people that are on the street. The list on the right side indicates a few of the locations. So these would be in your highest category of urban street, so where you would typically see wider sidewalks or many more pedestrian-oriented trips, the intersection of those. And then also the intersection of the next category down on our list. So maybe not as intense with the pedestrian-oriented trips, but still intersecting with one of the highest level and then one of the next lowest levels. These again would be in our urban centers. And the types of uses that would be promoted in these places would be your retail sales, eating and drinking establishments, entertainment-type businesses, recreation such as indoor sports, and art facilities, museums, for example. So those places where you would see a large turnover of pedestrians coming into and leaving that business for the purpose of that business versus, say, a lobby. The design of these would be consistent with what you would see in a more of a traditional downtown, so a high degree of transparency and their location at corners, which creates an opportunity for eyes on the street. And it also would be supportive of the vision for our centers, which is an 18-hour district with a vibrant nightlife. Jeff, can you go ahead, one, to make sure I didn't miss anything on the active retail? Okay, so let's go back. Are there any questions on this type of use?
No. Everyone's just nodding.
Wonderful. And then finally, food trucks and pop-up retail courts. So this is new. And so this is proposed as an allowed use. It's not saying that these are going to be necessarily constructed, but it is providing the opportunity for these to be created in locations where a developer would like, or in some cases, it might be through, say, a development agreement. So the food truck pop-up retail is meant to be a place where you are going to have the permanent location available to food trucks. Now, whether they are programmed to be consistently there or to be on a rotating scale, that can be done through an agreement, but it is a permanent location that supports the presence of food trucks, supports the presence of pop-up retail, whether it is in a temporary structure or a more long-term structure, say, like a kiosk, would also support some of those long-term or short-term uses, say, if you have a special event during a holiday season. So that would be allowed. Temporary use permits would not be required in this case because the space is designed to be supportive of that. Its design would include electricity, water, restrooms, ADA access. Those standards are based on the state's requirement for these types of spaces. And then in addition, events could occur there. So events, like entertainment events or special, say, like a Shakespeare in the Park or a concert, could occur in these and no special event permit would be required, again, because the space is designed to support that. Are there any questions on this type of use?
Commissioner Copley.
The state requirements for water, electric, restrooms, and ADA access, does that mean hookups? So you could?
Yes.
Great. And then on the ADA access, if this was a vacant lot, how do we envision providing proper access to the food truck? Is it going to be paved? Are there going to be ramps? Like, will those be taken away at the end of the event? Curious about that.
Yes, so we will add the details of this to your issues matrix, but again, just as a reminder, these are places that are developed with this intent in mind. So it wouldn't necessarily be a vacant court because that wouldn't meet the state requirements for the connectivity.
Oh, sorry, Vice Chair Wood here.
Yeah, I'm just curious, as this comes to life, are there plans to ensure that there's some measure of equity in terms of how this opens up opportunity for small businesses and other businesses that normally would have a harder time getting access to this kind of a privilege?
Yes, that is something that we have considered and we'll highlight that in the issues matrix.
Commissioner Coleman.
A few questions for probably issues matrix. One is, how many of these will we expect to put in? Are there sites already where there are examples of where these might go? Trying to think about, you know, for downtown Redmond, we've talked about the farmer's marketplace. That seemed like an obvious one, but where would be others? Because that has all the hookup stuff. And the third thing, I mean, I think about the events that were done previously, like SoBizarre, which I think fooled a lot of people, but there was a struggle, I think, in terms of just costs and logistics. How do we think about the logistics of putting something like that on in a way that is cost-effective as well? You know, what's, what does that look like in terms of how that's, how that's done? So those are three things.
So that was more of a programming question, maybe?
More of a programming question, yeah.
Okay. Which may or may not fit into the code question, but that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah. I had additional questions about this one, again, for the matrix, specifically for the, and this might be better for later, but the neighborhood mixed-use candidate parcels because the food truck and pop-up retail courts are permitted in those. And I had questions for those ones specifically about the stage, because that's a new part to me. When we talked about the food truck courts earlier, that wasn't included yet. And then the second question was about the generators allowed to operate up to 60 decibels per generator in those candidate parcels, if those are both the right decision or if those should have additional language if they are in a neighborhood setting instead of a downtown or a center setting.
I'll make sure that we include that at the issue users matrix. Matrix!
Great. Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, if we wanted to move to the next slide, I think. Yes.
Okay. So the last part of the uses presentation has to do with chapter 2105. And this is a new chapter and it's special districts and overlays. Some of the content from this chapter comes from other places in the code. Those are all the ones that are grayed out or from content that the planning commission reviewed earlier in Redmond 2050, so it's not yet adopted, but is on its way to adoption. So those are things like the Overlake TOD focus area and the Overlake Village Intercultural District. There are also existing overlays like the Southeast Redmond noise overlay, transition overlay areas and public view corridors and gateways that come from elsewhere in the code. But there are a few new pieces that we're asking the planning commission to review. They're, they're new cases of concepts you've already looked at. So TOD focus areas for downtown and for Marymore Village and a new kind of cultural district for Marymore, so a Marymore Arts and Cultural District. So there's some language in that, in the draft of 2105 that you received and, and I'll go into a little bit of detail on, on some of them. The downtown transit-oriented development focus area. So just like in Overlake, within the TOD focus area, there are additional incentives available for applicants, in order for applicants to be able to construct taller buildings than would be allowed outside the TOD focus areas. So in downtown, the tops out at 12 stories are 144 feet, so not, not as tall as in Overlake. And that TOD focus area covers, you know, roughly the 10-minute walk around the station. On the west side of the TOD focus area, it's not quite 10 minutes, it bumps up against Old Town where there's a height overlay. And so that kind of created a natural barrier there on the west side. And on the north side, it's, it encounters the downtown edge zone, which has a lower height limit. So it didn't make sense to continue the TOD focus area there. But it does, I mean, if you can imagine kind of what's on the ground in this area, so it's all of the town center zone, it's sort of the core of downtown, it includes the Bear Creek Shopping Center, where the Safeway is, that area as well. The Marymore Transit-Oriented Development Focus Area is all of Marymore Village except for the manufacturing zone. And again, would allow up to 12 stories with incentives. The only distinction in process between downtown and Marymore is that in Marymore, the environmental review that this city completed for the SEPA infill exemption only looked at six stories. And so anything above six stories is going to need to do a project-level environmental review, a SEPA checklist, which is what applicants do today. So that's not a change, but they just would not be able to take advantage of the streamlined infill exemption unless we were to redo the environmental, environmental analysis at some point in the future. So there's a lot of text on this slide, but there's kind of two ideas going on here for the Marymore Village Cultural District proposal. One is that, you know, we know that this area historically is important to tribes. And so having a connection to tribes in this area seemed like a natural fit. And we've had some conversations with tribal representatives about that. And then the other is arts, an area where, you know, this area is historically, at least in the last, you know, kind of several decades, a manufacturing area, manufacturing area, area where things get made. And so one of those things could be art. It's also an area where public art could be prominently displayed throughout the neighborhood. So kind of these two ideas are kind of the primary ideas for the Marymore Village Cultural District proposal. And that district is, is, is Marymore Village, all of it, including the, including the manufacturing Okay, so let me pause there because that's kind of, that's special districts. Any issues you want to throw on there?
Commissioner Coleman.
So in this, the, the Marymore Village Arts and Culture District, when we say arts, it feels, what I'm reading here is physical art. Is there anything in relation to room for performing arts? There's been obviously talk at different times about having a performing arts center in Redmond. Is there opportunity for that to happen here over time or how do we think about performing arts in general?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think just like the Overlake Intercultural District, this is, it's kind of birthing the baby. So it's great to have these ideas out.
Okay, I'll throw in two things. First, the Marymore Village Cultural District proposal looks amazing to me. I am hugely in support of this. And especially, it's partly tribal history and it's partly human history. My child is taking AP World History this year and his textbook started with the oldest civilizations known in the world, and our area is one of them. And Marymore has some of the oldest archaeological, like, evidence that's been dug up anywhere, I think, really celebrating that. And then also, obviously, the much more modern cultural version of that is important. It's just our history. So I, I love seeing this proposal. My second question was specific to the TOD focus area for downtown. The map that, of the outline of the 12 stories includes the area that we've already discussed for the farmer's market parcel. And I would like to just make sure that that's not included for the upzone, that that stays, hopefully, available for the farmer's market option or similar uses option, because we just discussed that this spring and summer and I want to make sure that's represented in the map. Commissioner Coleman.
Plus one to your comment on the farmer's market, I just want to say.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
We're coming up on the end here. 2108. We'll spend a lot of time on this because that, it's really a zone chapter and we talked about the neighborhood zones and the mixed-use zones two weeks ago. A lot of the content that today exists in 2108 is special use regulations for residential uses. And as I said earlier, that'll all get moved into 2104, which leaves very little left. And so that's why it's really, it has the same chapter number, but almost entirely new content. It's a long list of things moving out. And this is the list. Most of it's going to 2104. A few things are getting repealed, proposed to be repealed, general residential regulations that are duplicative, also affordable housing regulations that will exist in 2120, which is the Affordable Housing Chapter. And then one thing that's not moving to 2104 is the, there are some sections on measurement down at the very bottom, well, no, not at the very bottom, that are moving into 2116. It's how you measure things in the code. And so there was some of that in the residential zone and there's some of that in 2116 and they were not quite the same, but they should be the same. So they will be consolidated. And the same as last time, so we're talking about zones and uses right now. Today's October 9th. You have draft red lines for the first time. The public hearing notice will be published next week. You'll have another study session two weeks from today and I think that would be between now and the 23rd. Be a great time to work your way through all those red lines so that we can begin to kind of resolve issues that have been identified two weeks ago and then tonight, identify new issues from your reading that you do between now and then, just so that everybody feels really confident with what the material is when the public hearing is held on November 6th. And then thereafter, you know, as many study sessions as you need to kind of resolve issues and make a recommendation to the city council. That is the end of the slideshow for zones and uses. We were very generous with how much time we put on the agenda just because it got cut short last time. So you have option of, we can start going through some of the issues raised last time for as long as you want to do that. Or if you want to defer that to two weeks from now, that's also fine and we can move to the, the next agenda item. That's probably got about an hour's worth of content as well, but I'll leave it up to the commission.
Well, maybe what we can do first is, I don't know where people are in their reading, but if anyone has additional things to put into the matrix from their reading, maybe we can just scoop those up quickly.
Sure.
Does anyone have anything? Okay, I'm going to throw in a few. So for the neighborhood mixed-use candidate parcels, so these are the, I don't remember if it's 17 or 19, ones around. if it's 17 or 19 ones around this.
Today we're at 19.
So again, I love this idea. I think it is such a great option, and I love to see this city just proactively pursuing the outreach. I think this is going to be very much to those neighborhoods' benefit. I had a few questions about specific things that are available in the zoning that I think make more sense in the centers or business, like, other places, maybe not necessarily on the smaller parcels. So things that came up were golf course, other recreation and park, especially the recreation and park one is interesting because so many of them are very close to existing parks that maybe those wouldn't really activate the sites the same way that other options would. Rapid charging station came up in areas that are mostly suburban. I don't think that necessarily has the same value. So I wanted to see that one revisited. And then the last one was, there was a fairly large discussion in 2104, 2040 about kennels and like animal boarding and what that looks like and distance from the lot line and all of that, but I wasn't sure if that was included on these candidate sites or if they were an exception to it. So I wasn't sure exactly from reading the code whether or not, for example, like a doggy daycare would be permitted on these sites or not, and it would be nice to have that clarity.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. Do people want to go through and close? I feel like a lot of the open issues are from commissioners who aren't here tonight, so I'd actually kind of rather where we're a small group to get the discussion going when everyone's here.
Sure.
Okay. So maybe we'll take a five-minute break and then we can go to our next topic.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll be back, let's say, eight. Thanks. All right, so we are going to keep moving along to the briefing on incentives and requirements in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050. And is this Kim again or Jeff?
It's going to be me.
All right, Jeff, cheer cheer.
And Lauren and Odra through the course of their presentation, so we're happy to be here. So this is part two, but what I want, why I want everybody, remind everybody about is that fundamentally, this is really one package of amendments, and it's divided into two because there's just a lot, and it's more than we could really digest and bring to you all at once. So, but it's really one, and sometimes the lines get blurry and the conversations may cross over, and that's okay, because at the end of the day, you're going to make a recommendation on the whole thing. So what we'll cover tonight for the requirements and incentives is first the Article II regulations. Article II regulations are the regulations that apply citywide, and they're not use-based, not zone-based, they're just things that kind of apply broadly, and they're all kind of grouped together in the code. So we'll talk through site planning and measurement, so there's a few specific chapters we'll highlight, that's one of them, affordable housing, landscaping and open space, an incentives chapter, which is new with partly content that you've seen before, but you don't have red lines for any of this yet, so this is just, these are just kind of what you're going to see later. And then zoning map changes, specifically the neighborhood mixed-use sites, and we'll talk about that at the end. And again, I think we can just pause on each topic to identify issues for the matrix. But this is kind of the first introduction to this part of the package, so you really haven't, we haven't gone into any detail on this with you so far. So just first, broadly, earlier tonight, we talked most about the left column. Tonight, we're going to talk about the middle column, but not all of it, because some of it's stuff that's not changing. And then in two weeks, we'll talk mostly about the right column, design standards. So we're kind of focused in the middle. Citywide regulations, I found in Article II. Yep. All right, so here they are. If it's yellow, there's something happening in it, and so you can see that actually, there's not that much happening in Article II. A lot of it's just staying the same. If it's blue, it's being moved. So some of that content from the residential chapter on measurement is moving into 2116, site planning, I mentioned that a little bit earlier, so that's what's happening there. But otherwise, there's not a whole lot happening in Article II. But let's start with the site planning and measurement. As I said, some of this content exists in 2108, which, for residential zones in Article I, and some of it exists in Article II for every other zone, which is like 75% the same and 25% different. And you can imagine what kind of confusion that causes for customers and even for staff when they come in and are applying for permits and want to know how to measure things on their site, and they're not quite the same. So the idea is to have one standard way of measuring things, things like setbacks, FAR, that kind of thing, that could apply citywide, and it would be in this chapter. So that's what's going on here. There are some special requirements that are related to site planning from the residential zones that are coming here because they are specific to site planning, but that's the idea. This will be site planning and measurements, and I think this is the only slide on that. So let me pause and ask if there are, you have no red lines to look at, so it's just, it's just what I've told you and what you see on the slide.
Commissioner Copely.
Everything in white on Slide 5 means nothing has changed. That's right?
Yes.
So nothing changed in parking standards in 2140?
Nothing that, so we have assumed that everything that you reviewed earlier this year, the city council will adopt in November, and when, and so we are using that as the base text, so nothing else is changing in 2140.
Thanks, appreciate that.
We may, and just an addendum to that, we may find, and it's still, it's on our to-do list before these come out to you as drafts, we may find zone names lurking in these chapters that we need to change because they're old. Those aren't going to be substantive changes, there's changing of names, but those are things we might find in some of these chapters that we need to fix.
Commissioner Coleman.
Just a small question. Can you remind me what the transportation standards relates directly to?
That chapter includes, I'll, we'll put the outline in the issues matrix, but it has some bicycle standards in it, it has, it may be where the mobility management programs live, but we can put an outline in the issues matrix for you. 2120 is the Affordable Housing Chapter. The red lines that you will see will be inclusionary zoning parameters for the zones you haven't seen them yet for, so that'd be downtown, Marymore, and mixed-use. And earlier, you heard public comment about proposals for those zones. There was a workshop for housing regulations last week, last Thursday, I think, where city staff shared the model that was used to generate some preliminary proposals and then the proposals themselves. There's another workshop on the 14th to go over feedback that comes in between the last one and the next one. So they're not actually proposed yet, I think is what I want you to understand. What you see might be different than what was seen on the 3rd, and that depends in part on the feedback that's received. And there were specific numbers referenced that haven't actually been proposed to the planning commission yet. So related to that, there will be multifamily tax exemption program parameter updates. We do that because we want these programs to support each other to maximize the affordable housing outcomes. MFTE is a tax exemption program. It's in the Chapter III of the Title III of the municipal code. Doesn't come to the planning commission for review. We'll share with you what the plan is, just so you can see it, but you'll just be focused on the 2120, the Affordable Housing Chapter of the zoning code. And that's the only, it's the only slide on this chapter, so I'll pause.
So specific to the public comment tonight, do you want to add that to the issues matrix with the workshop slide link if they're on the site, or is it better for us, like, when is that coming, when is that information coming to us?
So the actual text, we would expect to have in your packet for your first meeting in November.
Okay, the same night as the public hearing?
Yes, the same night as the public hearing for Part I.
Okay.
But the public hearing for Part II, which would include the affordable housing, is in December, so you'd have it about a month ahead of the hearing.
Okay. So I'm probably not going to personally add anything to the issues matrix for the public comment tonight, but if an additional email came in with numbers, then it would always be interesting to see that, and that will get forward to us.
I mean, I think there are two things. I think there is the specific numbers, and it might be good to hold off and see kind of what the proposal actually is. There are also like methodological comments, and I think, you know, that's probably fair because I don't think that's really going to change in terms of like what the methods were, and so it'd be good to have a discussion about that. So if you wanted to add that now, I think that'd be appropriate, but it's up to you.
Okay. I think we're still filling out the issues matrix, so I think we're going to pause on that one just for now. And we will see as things keep coming in.
Okay, I will continue then. Chapters 32 and 36 are landscaping and open space, and so there'll actually be very little changing here, but I want to explain that. So when you saw landscaping and open space earlier this year, we said, you know, one thing we want to do is take a look at the centers' standards and see if we can't harmonize them a little more. That's work that is not yet done, and so we need to defer that into the next update cycle. It's not urgent, but it's something we'd like to do, just for streamlining. And then the other thing that we actually plan to do for 2024, because it's something that's easy to do and we can bring it to council and have them adopt it in November, is address what, most of what you see below. And so what's in this table is kind of a spectrum of, from, a spectrum on the left from like required open space that's private, that's in development, to the right, all the way on the right, which is public parks, which are the way on the right, which is public parks, which are, which vary in size, but are typically larger than private open space in a, in a, in a development. And it's really two columns in the middle that we're concerned with. So in the landscaping, actually in the open space regulations that you reviewed, there was a section on, that described kind of amenitized open space and it was, but it was referred to as privately owned public spaces. So privately owned public spaces kind of already has a meaning in the park plan and it really means something more akin to a public park that goes through a master planning process, this operated under park rules. And so there's, there's kind of confusion in the language in the code because POPS has been used now to refer to two different things. So what we, yesterday afternoon, what we asked the council to endorse was, just let us change the name of the thing in the open space chapter to publicly accessible enhanced amenity spaces, which is a lot to say. So you can call it P's, now you have POPS and P's and that's way more fun. So substance, there's no change to the open space requirements or to the ability to do these amenitized spaces. You can kind of earn credit for that. But by not calling it POPS, we can just get rid of the confusion between the two and let POPS be what they're intended to be in the park plan. So that's something we'll actually take care of in November. So that, that itself won't show up in the red lines for the open space chapter. I think that's the only slide I have on that chapter.
Can I ask one clarification? So when you say to the next update cycle, what year are we talking? Is that like after the 2025 code package? I'm not sure what happens next or is it like we wait eight years until?
Oh, no, it won't be that long.
Okay.
It won't be longer than like a year.
Okay.
Yeah. But like specifically how we program it, actually, we're, we're gonna, there's a, there's a healthy list of code amendments that are kind of in the hopper and we'll be doing some work planning actually in the next couple of weeks to kind of figure out what we think we can take on for the next couple of years.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren to walk us through the incentives program chapter, which is new.
Hi, good evening. So there is a new incentive chapter, 2155. So the Overlake incentive program that you have reviewed previously will be moving into this chapter, out of the Overlake chapter, and will be adding and updating the incentives for downtown and Marymore, so our other centers to match what the Overlake program looks like. So it'll be a similar points based system. And then we're looking to expand also to our mixed use in our citywide areas. In addition to moving everything to this new chapter, adding downtown and Marymore, we're exploring some additional bonus categories. So if you recall, we were discussing for Overlake, the family centered bonus. So if you do certain things from certain categories, you, it centers around building more amenities and housing for families, you get this extra bonus. So then looking to do that for the topics of also inclusive community and for arts and culture. So this gives you an idea of what it could potentially look like. You have sort of those different items for incentives and then the zones and the points associated with them as the columns. So it would be all on this nifty table.
I don't think, maybe you can read some of the words on that table. They're really small, but just the idea is like there would be more columns on the left for these automatic bonuses.
Yeah, oh, yes.
That's really kind of what the difference would be.
The arrow is, yeah. So some of the things that are new and different from Overlake for affordable housing, adding the less than 2% of additional units option, also looking at tribal housing partnership at the request of the Snoqualmie Tribe, but that's more centered in Marymore versus downtown. Looking at green building, using the citywide green building program prioritization, and then also looking at, council was interested in the evaluation of the EV ready program. So we'll be reviewing that.
I want to add a little bit about that. This council spent some time on the 24th of September discussing requirements or incentives for electric vehicle charging and it came out of a discussion of in part kind of what is proposed for Overlake. And what the council decided to do yesterday afternoon was to pitch that back to you to take a look at it in this code package more holistically for the whole city, about what kind of developments should have EV capable infrastructure installed, EV ready infrastructure installed, actual charging stations installed and like, and how much. So as part of this, we'll, we'll share with you kind of what, what are the requirements in the building code and what are other communities doing in that regard? What has council kind of expressed interest in so far in this process to see if you have the benefit of that? And then you can have a hearing on it and get some additional input from the community. But we thought rather than try to tie up that loose end at the end of the 2024 process, it was bigger. And so they agreed that having to come back here for some discussion would be a good
Commissioner Coleman.
This relates to some of the public comment originally about EV. That, in terms of that, sorry.
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you restate?
In terms of the, the public comment we had earlier, EV building into the, into plans and how to think about that.
Is there a part of that that you'd like to add to the matrix?
No, if we're going to cover it, we should cover it. It's just interesting to hear that public comment and to then think about this.
I mean, I think it's, I don't think it was coincidental. I think the person who made the comment probably heard the council talk about it.
Commissioner Kopley.
A suggestion based on the public comment, could there be a linkage of some sort of bonus maybe added to these other bonuses since we're looking at arts and culture and we're looking at these other bonuses? Could there be a green bonus that gets included if people will include the EV ready or capable infrastructure for charging? That's a suggestion.
Great, thank you.
Another question on the EV ready versus capable versus not included would just be if, I know that budget doesn't generally affect our decision-making that much, but this is one where it does seem like it puts pressure, like there is a development cost and then there's also a fair amount of new funding available. And I don't know how that actually breaks out into like, what is a reasonable ask?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make that part of the conversation. The good news is there are some good studies on what the costs are. And so that'll, that, those numbers are actually available.
Amazing. Okay, thank you. And then I had one additional comment just about the table. The points is very confusing to me, so just, I realize we only saw a snippet of it, but when we've seen that table in the past, we've had a broader view so we could actually see like how, like the percentages, like how much of the total can be done through one kind of incentive versus another, like how many points do you need to actually make an impact, which just helped kind of measure, is this easy, is it hard? And that was super valuable when we saw it for Overlake.
Yeah, so let me go back to that slide because I think the, the numbers in those cells are really meaningless for tonight's discussion. The, the point which we did not make well enough is that there are certain automatic bonus categories, because there's only one, is for child friendly. The proposal is to have a couple of more and they just show up on the left side. And so, and so certain incentives would qualify for those new categories and that trigger of an automatic bonus. Now, yes, you will see a table that has everything that you saw for Overlake, you'll see the same kind of table for downtown, Marymore and the mixed use zones. And then it's a good, a good opportunity to, to call out that in the packet, there was a matrix with zones and incentives that just had, it didn't have point totals, it just had priority levels from very low to very high. And that's there for your consideration and it's to help us understand how planning commissioners and others view these incentives relative to each other. Like what's the most important thing to have in, in each of these zones? Because that's how the points actually, that's, the points are a combination of how important is it to the community and how much does it cost? So that, so that's still in development, which is why we sent that out.
Great. Commissioner Coleman.
Just a minor question just struck me about EV ready parking. When we say EV, is it all EV, like fully EV, hybrid, you know, plug-in hybrid? Is it related to, how does it sort of impact those other types of, those other types of cars?
We'll add it to the matrix.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kopley.
How much communication or transparency is there between the city and private sector housing developers in what's feasible? Why we put these programs together on the affordable housing or inclusionary housing requirements and what amount of housing might be lost? Because I think we could all agree that we could use more 50 to 80% AMI housing yesterday. So I just want to ensure that there's a conversation happening there and that both sides understand each other. Because when I look at, for example, this chart, I have no clear understanding of what I would have to do to qualify for these bonuses and be able to make that housing appear if I was on the development side. And I would also just ask if this is even possible, if you guys would host some kind of a workshop on how this works, I would be happy to attend that and just learn more about how this works.
This is the workshop for?
This chart, just.
Which chart are we talking about?
On slide 10. I'd be really interested in learning how people qualify for these bonuses and how these points work and that kind of thing would be awesome for me. I don't know if anyone else would benefit from that.
There's one scheduled and do you know the date offhand, Lauren?
It's going to be on Tuesday, I think at 10:00 AM. It should be on the Redmond 2050 homepage to register for that.
And there'll be a better table.
Can I chime in on the prioritization chart that went from very low to very high and then all the different uses and then all the different zones? How did the city develop the, like the numbers are there or the assessments that are there now, the priorities are there now? Where did those come from?
I think the short answer is they're kind of developed out of the Redmond 2050 process and what we've heard from the community about what's important.
So then the guidance that you'd be looking at from us would be, are there things that we think aren't reflective?
Yeah, I mean, in, I think, you know, as, as community members and of people who have been hearing from community members throughout this process, as you look at that, is there like, hey, I kind of had a different take on that. I thought that was much more important or much less important than you got it here and can have a conversation about that.
Wonderful. Okay. If, when this comes back next week, if we could ever have like another slide focusing on that specifically, I think that would really tee up the question.
Okay, shall I advance this?
Some other things being considered for the 2155 is adding an option for more sensory spaces in the inclusive design section, also looking at the building site form and uses section, so looking at using the same options as Overlake and then also adding a shell buildout. So something that we heard is a challenge for opening restaurants is you start to rent a space, but it doesn't have a lot of the vents or the grease traps that you would need for opening a restaurant. So adding an incentive to kind of build those out, even if you don't necessarily have a tenant, a restaurant has a tenant moving in right away, at least the bones are there in the building. And then we also wanted to pose as a question to the planning commission and the public, is, are there any other ideas or things that we should be including kind of for buildouts and that we want to be incentivizing in Marymore, downtown or our mixed use areas?
Commissioner Coleman.
On that last point, the shell buildout, are there, is there some way of getting ahead of areas where we know some businesses are going to get shuttered because of development around that, where there could be some incentives to move certain businesses that, you know, want to move into some other location and give an incentive? I'm thinking, like for example, we've talked a little bit about this with like Three Lines, British Pantry, that whole area, that, that sort of building area, going to those businesses and saying, hey, here's some opportunity, actually giving them more of an incentive to do that upfront. Just wondering if they're, that's an example. Does that make sense?
And we still will have the displacement incentives. I think those will carry through to the citywide and the downtown Marymore, but maybe adding it, adding something for, as like a bonus?
Yeah, like more of an incentive to get ahead of it potentially, knowing it's coming.
Maybe something for the arts and entertainment bonus.
I'll give a plug again for the anti-displacement for businesses is really challenging and we are happily the recipients of some technical assistance from, from some consultants that HUD is paying for, for us. And we are nearly at the point where we have sort of a draft strategy report from them and we hope that can inform not, not, not just even primarily code-based anti-displacement strategies, but just programmatic anti-displacement strategies that would be equally useful to, to businesses like that. And when we have it, we'd be happy to share it with you.
Great.
Yeah, I'd love to see that and get to that point.
Okay, another topic for incentives, open space, public art and culture and public amenities. So similar categories or same categories at Overlake, but different needs and different locations, so the prioritization will vary. So this is also where we're kind of looking for some input, you know, if we got that prioritization right, if we're on the right track with that. Do we want to add any incentives for podium and rooftop amenities or adding podium or top direct connection to ground level? So there's some challenges there in that podium space that's publicly accessible. And then adding public art and culture items will be grouped together and then that placeholder for the POPS slash P's for parks to develop in the future. Well, no, POPS are for parks. Yeah.
Commissioner Coleman.
I'm just curious if this, if this is covered as well with the Arts and Culture Commission? Have they had input into this? I'm just curious because, you know, things like public art and some of the installations have had the Arts and Culture Commission involved with that. I'm just wondering what their involvement is with this, this aspect in the commissions.
All right. I know we visited the Arts and Culture Commission when the overlay incentive program was developed and then also when the, there's a, there's a chapter that you've already reviewed for the code that deals with public art and how it gets, how it gets reviewed and the role of the Arts and Culture Commission in that and which was kind of codifying a practice that had kind of been established, but this makes it kind of, makes it real. So yes, there has been some, some involvement by the Arts and Culture Commission.
I guess, is this in addition to that, some, I guess my question is, is this something that they should get some input into or are you saying we already have input from them that's related to what's here?
I'm going to put that on the matrix for a response.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. I had one additional kind of question, comment. The ADA accessible loop exercise trails with benches and mile markers, that's the first time I've seen this. I think it's a really cool idea. I would love to hear a little bit more about what's envisioned there and especially like, how much of a trail does it have to be? And some of the other things that we've talked about in trails, so like, for example, not having all the HVAC equipment and fans like right on the trail or not having the garbage right on the trail or it seems like it could be more difficult for the site, but being a little bit more specific about like, is this actually a nice place to walk or is it difficult? So that was the first part of the question on that. And then the second part of the question is, would there be any effort to link that, like if there were multiple sites that chose this option, is there like an extra bonus if you have more walkable, linkable pieces? And then I was thinking even further when we were talking about the very, oh dear, the, the site, the very activated sites, I don't know if the right wording on it, but is it where they'd have just like a lot more traffic and a lot more. where they'd have just like a lot more traffic and a lot more, if there were ways to actually link those city-designated places into that mile marker system? The place I've seen this done really successfully in Redmond so far is actually the Microsoft campus. They've had a trail system there for about 15 years and it's lovely. And it's, it's very, it's very much used during the day. It's a, it's a real thing that people take advantage of. And so having a more urban version of that, I think, would be lovely. But it works well when people can kind of hop in and hop out. So I just, I actually really just wanted to see this succeed and so getting more specific on how it could.
Great.
Another, so this is expanding on that, or this is the catalyst category. So this is some new ideas. So these are categories that don't fall into any of the other categories. Some of them are sort of one-off, you know, first, first that comes in does it and then we may, it may expire. Or it's something sort of big, you don't necessarily need to do other parts of the incentive program to get the incentive if you do a catalyst project. So some new ideas in this latest draft for the incentives for the catalyst category is kind of a disability employment program, similar to another, to other local employment programs. If you do need to build a parking garage, build it to be convertible in the future, so either to office or housing. So as parking gets phased out, you can convert it. And then also tribal partnership for event space. And then also that new category for POPS.
Vice Chair Woodier.
I find the parking garage, the convertible parking garage idea really interesting. Do we have examples of how that has worked in other communities or other locations? I'm trying to visualize what that, what that means, what that looks like.
There was an example that Glenn shared with us on the convertible parking garage.
Yeah, there's a building in Calgary that was just built, I believe it was, it's called Platform Calgary. We can provide a link to it. I actually visited it a couple of weeks ago while we were having this conversation as staff. So we can provide some information. But it was built as kind of a workspace with a garage with a certain amount can be converted into workspace. So it's an intriguing idea.
Commissioner Coleman.
So is that, Glenn, so is that temporary or is that sort of permanent conversion? Or both?
I believe it can be into permanent conversion. I said, I can provide the link. I don't have super amount of information, but yeah.
Okay, I think I've covered the green building program. Is that right?
Sorry, one late addition. Commissioner Coleman, or sorry, Copley.
Just trying to understand the disability employment program and how that fits into planning. Would there be certain structures that were designated as areas to give or offer employment to people that are disabled? Or help me understand how that relates to the planning.
Yeah, and I think that's a, that's a good question. We'll add it to the matrix. And I think it's something we are kind of actively working through the details on. It's like, how do you, what kind of agreement do you need to reach with the developer, right? Who's there to build a building about the future use of that building and what kind of commitments would they need to make about who would be employed? Maybe they would need a partner, because that developer probably doesn't have expertise in disability employment. Maybe they need to bring someone in that does, that could make some kind of commitment about the use of that building or a space in that building to accomplish the purpose or the community objective, which is having, having a place where there could be a focus on employing people with disabilities. So I think, you know, some of the details will be worked out, but that would be the idea. Another chapter related to this, it's actually not in Article 2. This is Chapter 67, Green Building. It's actually in Article 4. But the reason it's coming to you is because we're talking about incentives. Article 4 is all the environmental regulations, that's why it's there. One of the questions that's been posed, that we're going to pose the Planning Commission is, well, there are some green building incentives that the Planning Commission recommended be made mandatory for Overlake. There are four of them specifically. And I should have all four at the tip of my fingertips, but I don't have all four of them right now. And so a question that will come up as part of this review as well, maybe that's what we do just for Overlake. Maybe we do that for all the centers, to have a consistent approach to those standards in all the centers. Maybe the mandatory provisions should be added to include electric vehicle charging infrastructure, just specifically EV-ready. Maybe some of the mixed-use zones should also have some of those mandatory features. Maybe they should be citywide. So that, there's a conversation about what of the things that the Planning Commission recommended be made mandatory in Overlake should also be made mandatory elsewhere. That's part of the question. And then the second part is, there's this whole conversation around electric vehicle charging infrastructure. What level of it should be provided and where? And should it be required or should it be incentivized? So that's all, that's all, that's all coming to you.
So we'll get more details next time or?
So the actual, so I think in two weeks, we're going to focus really on design standards. And then in four weeks, you'll have kind of the text for everything. And so probably in four weeks, we'll probably come back to it.
Lovely. Okay.
If there's things you want to make sure that are on the issues matrix related to this, this is just the first opportunity to toss those in.
Commissioner Coleman.
So I was looking at the example slide, the next one, that sort of thing is related, is that right? Community feedback?
Yes, this is an example of the table, of like, how it would show up, like, what's mandatory and what's optional. It did noted in the cell with the M and the O and kind of in which zones.
I was just curious, seeing that, whether the community had any other kind of feedback around what sort of percentage of the buildings should be like this, anything around kind of what the scale of this should be in these different areas? Is that something we've been thinking about or is that sort of a next kind of step as to where it might apply?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
Well, we've sort of got, you know, sort of mandatory green building requirements. What percentage of the building would we want that to be? Does that, is there, is there some guidelines around, hey, 5% of the building should, you know, if they're mandatory, they get this, you know, these sort of incentives?
Are you asking how, like, what percentage of a single building would be, would meet a green building standard?
No, I'm just saying, like, if-
What percentage of the buildings in a community?
Buildings in a community, like, how many there would be, would be green buildings?
Gotcha.
Were there any thoughts around kind of?
Usually the same rules apply to everyone in the zone. So like, if there's, if we're saying the zoning code says this in Overlake, then it applies to everything in Overlake.
Right.
Like, all new construction. So I would assume that we'd be following that same model, where we're saying, what's the, like, what's the minimum acceptable?
Yeah, so that's my question, which is what is the minimum acceptable mandatory green buildings?
Right. And so that's our discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Great. I'll add that to the matrix so that we can provide more information on kind of what we heard. Good question. Okay. Okay. So we are going to go back, two weeks ago, we introduced kind of the neighborhood mixed-use parcel, candidate parcel process. And we want to share with you details about the actual candidate sites.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. So we went over some of the, some of the process that we did and we looked at some of the areas, but the map was really small. So we're going to go into the zooms that show these boxes. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the process, just a big general overview, we looked at the complete neighborhood study that we did last summer. We linked in your packet that story map and also the zoning story map, so you could kind of play with the interactive maps and look at the analysis. And from that complete neighborhood study, we, we chose like areas where we could implement this complete neighborhoods concept, specifically in our residential zones, right? Not in the centers, so outside of centers. And from that analysis, we identified 73 parcels. We reached out to the owners of these parcels, first inviting them to the mixed-use event that we had in June and then doing like targeted outreach, sending specific letters to each one of these owners, invited them to like a one-on-one talk. So we set up 34 parcels or owners of these parcels, they responded to the outreach, but not of, not all of them wanted to have this rezone. From those 34, 21 showed an interest. And from those 21, we had to remove two, because when we looked at the specific site, we saw that it was an HOA, a cul-de-sac, and we're going to look at that with some of the pictures. And also it had like a private street. So it was, it had some constraints, so we dropped those two. So let's look at the specific maps and the zoomed-in maps. The gray means that these are the, the ones that we did outreach to them, but they did not respond. The black are the ones that said specifically they were not interested and the reds are the ones that are interested. So this is in Education Hill. As you see, we chose sites that had also this activity density. So it is near several schools, near parks. The community outreach before we did the targeted outreach always mentioned that they wanted to see these kinds of small businesses near parks came up many times, specifically Dark Park and Education Hill came up several times. So that's why you try, we were trying to choose some parcels that were around that area. So the two parcels that we chose, one, and the number one is a total residential structure. It is in one of the corners, it's very small. And you see here with the pictures what it looks like, it's, it's a house. And the second one, we also did some outreach to religious institutions, because they have these big parking lots that are in our residential neighborhoods and those parking lots are vacant most of the time. So we thought that could be a good option for some of these institutions, that they could put like a little coffee shop or some kind of store. And from the ones that we reached out, one of them, they are pretty interested in this concept and that's the number two there. I also got some calls today from the, one of the parcels in the north, but they're not interested. So this is like an evolving number of parcels, because we, we keep hearing from people, they keep calling us and so it is not, they are not like sticking to one timeline, which is okay, we just want to talk to them and do the outreach. So can we go to the next slide, please? So the, this is a little bit different, because these 13 parcels that you look here, look at here in the red part, those were recently annexed in July and most of them are vacant. And also, it's like 13 parcels were, were annexed and eight of those parcels are from the same owner. So it is a pretty interesting area, because it's, I think, from those eight parcels, only two are, have some kind of structure, the rest are completely vacant. There is a little bit of a critical zone on the south, but still it is pre-developable and they're interested in this, in this neighborhood mixed-use. Also, two more property owners were interested too in getting that rezone. The other parcels, one of them said no, the one in the north that is near Lake Washington Technical College, because they are already at the plat stage, they already started the process of developing that, that parcel. So, and you can see it is also near some parks, there is like a church in front of that, that little red polygon. So it is also an activity hub there that could benefit from all the density there. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, so this is, yeah. So here we see Grasslon. Grasslon came up also several times, as I was mentioning, having something near the park. And those two parcels that you see there with the hash are the ones that were dropped from the list because of the HOA and the private street and all that. And that is the, the photo that you see right there. Can we go to the next slide? So number two, we reached out to all of these parcels. We heard back from some of them that they were not interested. They were mentioning sites constrained, like having a blind curve, so it was hard to get into. But we did get this owner, he owns those two parcels and he is interested in having them as a neighborhood mixed-use. But we did not hear from the parcel that is in the middle, which would have been ideal to have those three parcels. So that's why you see like that little vacant spot in there. And one of the parcels is completely vacant. Can we go to the next slide? Yes. This area is also very interesting, because it's on 60th Street. So those three, that, the whole development is an older development. It is like kind of an island between, that area has been developed a lot lately. So these three owners were very interested in having that neighborhood mixed-use. The rest of the developer did not respond, only one parcel. And yesterday evening, I got another email from one of the property owners that he wants to discuss. I don't know if he's going to go like yes or no. But it's also one that is on the same street, right next to the three parcels. Yes. Yeah. And that was near the, the school and the two parks. So it's also a pretty interesting site. Can we go to the next slide? Yeah, and these two are also pretty interesting. These were also mentioned several times by the community, which are right in front of Idable Park and by the, the parking lot, the overflow parking lot. So the property owners from the one on the top, they reached out directly to us, they came to us like by chance at one of our Microsoft events. So it was really like very fortunate, like very good that they just came to us like suddenly. And they're very interested in having this, but they do have a critical area in the part of the parcel. So we are going to be testing out the regulations with these two parcels specifically, because of the shape they have and also the, having that critical area. So that is one of our next steps, to talk to them after we do some testing of the regulations. Can we, I think that's the last one?
That's the last slide. So why don't we pause here and see if there's anything you want to add to the matrix at this point.
Commissioner Copley.
Do HOAs generally just prevent this or is there a meeting of an HOA that precedes a response to you?
Do you want to put it on the matrix and respond? But what happened with the one in Grasslon is that they, all of them had to come in with the neighborhood mixed-use and one of the sites already was developed. It's actually right now in construction, it's a big, I think it's 5,000 square feet house. So that person was, of course, not interested anymore in having this as an option. So if they didn't all come in and voted, it would not have happened.
Commissioner Coleman.
It's actually really interesting, the one on 166 and Northeast 95th, that's very close to where I live and it seemed an obvious candidate, so I'm pleased to see that's on there. What are the timings? My question is, what are the timings with these in terms of what's the next step? Where does it go? Like, how should we think about that?
You mean with the zoning?
No, with the examples you've got here and the people that are interested, like, what's the, what's the sort of next step and where would it, where might we, where might we sort of go? Okay, this is opened, what's the sort of timing?
Well, I guess it depends on, on each owner, like, what their plan is for their, for their parcel. But I've talked to some of them and some of them have already ideas on what they want to see in the actual parcel. And others are like, I'm thinking about it, I don't really know yet. So it, I guess it depends on each, each person and the budget and all of those things. But these are going to be adopted in spring. So once the, all the zoning map changes are adopted and the zoning regulations, then it will have to happen eventually.
Vice Chair Woodier.
So the idea is that these potential properties will be completely redeveloped within the zoning requirements?
Well, they can-
Or could it be anything of, it could be depending on what the owners?
Yes, it depends on what they want to see, but we're trying to be very flexible. They, they could use an existing structure, for example, and say, okay, this half of this is going to be, or-
Okay.
My house.
It could be all or it could be part or it could be somewhere in between.
Yeah, they have to work with the regulations that we presented last time, though.
Commissioner Copley.
Could the city acquire these and then use them for a public benefit or public service?
City can acquire land for limited purposes. Things like parks, they have to have clear public purpose. And in Washington State, that's pretty stringently defined. So acquiring it for the purpose of operating as a small business is probably one, probably one that would not pass muster.
I'm realizing that my comments about the golf courses, recreation park, rapid charging station and kennels probably should be in this matrix, not the previous one. But I had one other question about specific site uses. So drive-throughs, I wanted to ask how that would be-
Not allowed.
Okay, because it looks like they are allowed in neighborhood mixed-use according to the land use charts right now?
To check that, we'll check that.
Okay. And 2104, 2100 had the description of like what drive-through-
So first we looked at the complete neighborhood analysis that we did last summer and we identified areas also based on community input that we did some outreach and people were like, oh, like for example, these triangle parcels, they came up constantly. Also some site in, near Hartman Park, that also came up like very, very, many, many times. So it's basically, that was the first pass, identifying the areas where we got those hits and then identifying parcels that could be redeveloped to this. So for example, the ones on 60th Street, those, that's an older development that could probably soon develop at some point. So instead of going to just housing, it could be an option to have this mixed use in there.
So is, are there plans to always continuously look at this list or perhaps there are additional candidate properties that could be added to this list?
Yeah. We are hoping that's, when, once we get some kind of parcels in that zoning map, other property owners, if I'm interested, they could reach out and we could work with them. But they would not be coming in with the Redmond 2050 process.
I'll point out that in your packet, there is a list of all the candidate sites and all the addresses. And it includes whether they are part of the 19 that are kind of under active consideration. If you would like to, please go visit them. You know, don't trespass, but you know, go, go walk by or drive by. Don't do it together. Suit on your own. But you can do that because the photos can tell you something, but actually visiting the site could tell you something also. Whatever you learn, I think it's good to just come back and put that in the public record so that it's just, so that everybody has the same information when making a recommendation. But you can go do site visits.
I can actually jump on that if you don't mind. So I've been doing this this week. It's easy because a lot of them are in my neck of the woods, including one right at the top of my street that wasn't listed in these. It's on the big map, but it wasn't in the callouts. But it would be so cool to have local businesses there that are actually, that are supporting the neighborhood and making it more vibrant and making it like more accessible and more fun and more usable. It just, there's so many opportunities here. So I'm, I'm really positive about this and just driving past them and being like, those would be fantastic uses of some of those larger lots or groups of lots. I really appreciate this work.
Thanks, Odra.
Thank you.
That brings us to the last slide. Did it come up? No. What happened? Okay. Which is just the review timeline. So we'll be back in two weeks with mainly a discussion on design standards, which is the rest of this package. But also there'll be some responses to some of the issues raised tonight. We also have zones and uses back on the agenda next week. As you can see there, the actual red lines, as I've said, will be in your packets for November for this part of the package, the requirements and incentives to prepare for a public hearing in December, on December 4th. After which you'll have study sessions to close out remaining issues and make a recommendation to the city council, either December or potentially January. And that is the, that concludes the presentation.
Does anyone have any last pieces to add into the issues matrix today? No? All right. And people can either bring them next time or send them for the remainder of this week.
Adding issues? Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yeah. If there's issues that come up between now and the end of the week and you want to send them to the planning commission inbox, that'd be great.
Great. All right. In that case, I think we're going to move on to staff and commissioner updates.
I don't have anything unless Jeff has something.
I will, I already mentioned a little bit about the council committee meeting yesterday afternoon, but just in summary, the council has finished reviewing the planning commission's recommendations for everything to get adopted in 2024. They did that yesterday afternoon. They will take up expansions to the residential targeted areas for multifamily tax exemption next Tuesday night at their business meeting. They have to hold a public hearing by state statutes, so they'll do that. And then on November 4th, it'll be back in front of them as a whole adoption package to preview. And then on November 19th, they would actually vote. So getting close to the end with everything that you reviewed up through this summer with the council. And on November 19th, you'll be invited more formally, but you're warmly invited to come to the council meeting. There may or may not be treats. And it'd be, it'll just be an opportunity to celebrate. So if you're not doing anything on November 19th, that Tuesday evening, you'll be preparing for a planning commission meeting the next night. But come on down. We'll have a good time.
Commissioner updates. Oh, sorry. One more staff update.
I just remembered. Lauren mentioned the incentives workshop. I looked it up just to make sure the date. So it's on Monday, October 14th at 10:00 AM. That's the incentives program workshop. And then just to continue the series, 11:00 AM, same day, housing, part two. Thursday, the 24th, design standards at 10:00 AM. Thursday, October 31st, incentives in green building, part two, 10:00 AM. All that's on redmond.gov/reben2050. And you are all invited to register. If there's a quorum problem, we will let you know.
Great. Commissioner updates. I had a lighthearted one. We've done so much talking about streams and the natural environment and different elements over the last six months. And I, or longer than that, I guess, but I went with my family this weekend to see the salmon running in the Smamish River, which are huge. There are also a ton of trout. It was really enjoyable. So if you haven't been, this is the first time I've seen them and I've lived in Redmond for a long time. It was really fun. I recommend it. Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I just want to reflect on something. You know, we've, we've been talking about, you know, the local, like putting in businesses locally. I was reflecting, my father's about to turn 89 and he's got up at six in the morning since he started working in the 60s and goes to the local newsagent, gets his paper, comes home and reads it. And he is like, he, you can know where my father is at eight o'clock in the morning. He, you know, and the reason I bring that up is having something locally where people can go, particularly older people on a regular basis for exercise, fresh air, for things like that, I think is really valuable. And we should also, I didn't put it in the issues matrix, I just want to make a comment. But I think for trying to bring community together and particularly for lonely elderly people, my father's not lonely, but for people that are like that, I think it makes a big difference. So I'm really pleased that we're looking at this.
Lovely. Thank you. All right. With that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Then we are adjourned.[1702.51]